Is it by vo- voice vote, or are you gonna hand out ballots?
Uh, just by.
Okay.
Ready? Nine o'clock.
Good morning, it is 9:00 AM. Welcome to the November 15, 2017 City Council Meeting. Let the record reflect that all City Council members and officials are present. Please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with a special request for your guidance. Today, our council will select new mayor and vice mayor. We ask that you guide those voting in the election process to the ways of clear thinking and adherence to a purpose above themselves. All these, we say, amen.
Amen.
Unfettered reasons, unified, of the United States of America, and as the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Todd.
Welcome.
The first item of business is the council reorganization, which the city clerk will handle the first portion.
Yes, the first item we have is the results of the November 7, 2017 election. We did have two Ponte Gorda seats up for election this year, District 3 and 5. Both incumbents, Mr. Gary Wine and Ms. Nancy Pravky, were unopposed and are therefore re-elected and to serve their respective districts. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
And the next item, then, would be swearing you in. So, you wanna come down front with me? I'll have you sign off just to your side. So, you would raise your right hand, and you'll say, "I will." I try to get you to read it. So, here we go. Do you, Gary Wine and Nancy Pravky, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and of the State of Florida, that you will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the City of Ponte Gorda, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the temple?
I will.
Congratulations and welcome back.
Welcome back, yeah.
It was a long journey.
And next, we have the city attorney.
Yes. At this time, we will open the floor for nominations for the office of mayor.
I would like to nominate Rachel Kiesling to continue on as mayor of Ponte Gorda.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, this would be an opportunity to make a motion to have Mayor Kiesling rec- recognize through your election as the mayor by acclamation.
I shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I vote?
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. I can't believe I'm going into my eighth year here. It's been a journey. We've been through some...
Eight years?
Yes. Been through some hardships, but for the most part, we're keeping it on track, and I look forward to continuing. Thank you.
And now, it's your responsibility to preside over the election of the vice mayor.
Okay, I will take nominations for vice mayor.
I'd like to nominate Nancy Pravky.
I'd like to nominate Gary Wine.
So, we have two nominations. Hearing anymore? Okay, we have two nominations, Nancy Pravky and Gary Wine.
So, you would ask, um...
Just for a show of hands?
By a show of hands.
Could I have a show of hands for Nancy Pravky for vice mayor, please? And a show of hands for Mr. Wine? Mr. Wine.
So, do we need a motion now?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
No, we don't? Okay, congratulations, Gary. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, next, we have a multitude. I think we all have a proclamation to read, so this is gonna take some time, but it's very exciting. The first one is "Christmas Parade Day" by Councilmember Matthews. Oh, yes. Awesome.
It's my pleasure to make this proclamation on behalf of the city. Whereas the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce is devoted to enriching the business, civic, and cultural aspects of Charlotte County; and whereas the Christmas season has been traditionally celebrated with a chamber-sponsored Christmas parade for the citizens and visitors to the community; and whereas the 39th Annual Christmas Parade will commence at 12:00 noon on the afternoon of December 9, 2017; and whereas the parents of little ones should note the one and only "Mr. S." clause will travel thousands of miles to attend the historic event in the beautiful city of Ponte Gorda; and whereas the parade theme of holiday happiness brings about pleasant memories of hearth and home from many locales; now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim Saturday, December 9, 2017, as Christmas Parade Day, and urges all citizens to share in the fun at the Christmas Parade. Passed and duly adopted and regular session this 15th day of November, 2017, Rachel Kiesling, mayor. And is Ron Thomas here? Okay, then, we will have Julie Mathis accept this on behalf of the chamber. Thank you for this proclamation. This year, the parade's gonna step off from Charlotte Performing Arts Center. We leave at noon. We'll head north on Taylor and disband at the event center. I encourage all of you to come and participate, floats, decorated cars or trucks, or performing units, and it'll be a great day, 'cause it always is. Thank you, Ponte Gorda, for your help with this, too.
And next, we have Shop Charlotte Month by Vice Mayor Wine.
Proclamation of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida. Whereas the Board of Directors of the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce recognizes the importance of supporting the growth of our local economy; and whereas purchasing cars, boats, consumer goods, gifts, and other products and services in Charlotte County can contribute greatly to local growth with each dollar spent during our econ- to our economy; and whereas the goal of Shop Charlotte is to strengthen opportunities and jobs and the general prosperity of all by asking Ponte Gorda residents to plan their next shopping spree right here at home. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim November 24, 2017, through December 24, 2017, as Shop Charlotte Month in the City of Ponte Gorda, and encourages consumers to make every effort to support local merchants and stores within Charlotte County by shopping Charlotte. Passed and duly adopted and regular session this 15th day of November, 2017, signed Rachel Kiesling, mayor. And accepting will be Denise Stoll.
I'd like to... My name is Denise Stoll. I'm president of the Charlotte County Chamber and also work with integrity employee leasing, and on behalf of the chamber, I'd like to accept this proclamation and thank the city for allowing us to express the importance of shopping local, not only just for the holidays, but all day, and every day. Thank you.
And next, we have Lung Cancer Awareness Month by Councilmember Pravky.
Thank you. It's my honor. Proclamation, City of Ponte Gorda, Florida. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death in both men and women in the United States, accounting for 30% of all cancer deaths; and whereas lung cancer takes the lives of more Americans each year than breast, prostate, colon, liver, and kidney cancers combined, and is the leading cause of death in Charlotte County, Florida; and whereas roughly 20% of all lung cancer cases were found in people who have no history of smoking, but may have been exposed to carcinogens in their environment such as secondhand smoke, radon, asbestos, or other chemicals; and whereas, an approved lung cancer screening protocol cues... Excuse me, using low-dose CT scan has now been endorsed by the United States Preventative Services Task Force with a B recommendation requiring private insurers to pay for screening with no copay or deductible; and whereas, these facts surrounding lung cancer, including the lack of research funding to reduce lung cancer mortality and increase survivorship, is not generally known by the public; and whereas, the promotion of lung cancer screening and early detection among the high-risk population has the potential to double or triple the five-year survival rate. Now, therefore, the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, hereby proclaims November 2017 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month, passed and duly adopted in regular session this 15th day of November, 2017, City of Ponte Gorda, Rachel Kiesling, mayor. And accepting is Tom Capiello.
Our champion.
My name is Tom Capiello. I'm the president and founder of Lung Cancer Research Council, which is a charity designed to promote lung cancer awareness. This is Lung Cancer Awareness Month. I have with me ribbons. Most people don't know, but breast cancer, it's pink. Lung cancer, it's pearl. So, I'm gonna ask if Nancy, or if you could just pass it around the room, and I'd ask you all to wear it. Lung cancer, as the proclamation says, is the leading cause of death in Charlotte County. And we had a race here the other day. We had over 700 names of people that died from lung cancer in Charlotte County at the race. There's over 700 signs extending for almost a mile. So, I want you all to be aware, and if you've ever smoked in your past, I suggest if you're over the age of 55, you talk to your doctor and get screened. Thank you, and thank you to the City Council for doing this.
Welcome.
Thank you, Tom. And next, we have Giving Tuesday by Councilmember Cummings.
Hello. Whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day for giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving; and whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism where people give whatever they're able to give; and whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people; and whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service to the City of Ponte Gorda; and whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout the holiday season and during other times of the year. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim November 28, 2017, as Giving Tuesday in the City of Ponte Gorda, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community any way possible. Passed and duly adopted, 15th day of November, Rachel Kiesling, mayor. Marie?
Marie! Okay. You got a lot of paperwork there.
Well, thank you. Nobody would recognize me without the hat, would you? Okay. Thank you, everybody, here in the City of Ponte Gorda. You have just joined an international movement for celebrating and giving back to your community, to whatever you do. And I want to reiterate to you, and thank you, guys, for giving me a mic.
Should I start the timer?
Yeah, you should. Give your voice, give your time. Volunteer where it's needed in your community, whether it's your neighbor, and this includes from the smallest child to the 103-year-old adult. You know, celebrate that. And... Sorry, I actually brought notes. Make sure you're an informed giver. If you're giving money, make sure you inform yourself what kind of a nonprofit or wherever you're going, so the money is going to the right place. And if you cannot, if you cannot give of your time, the easiest way is to give your money. And Giving Tuesday would be, you know, the day to do it, to celebrate the philanthropy, whether you're Lung Cancer, the Chamber, Tom, you give. So, thank you, everybody. Please join us for Giving Tuesday. Tuesday, November 28, you have Thanksgiving, Black Friday, what's on Saturday, small business, what's on Monday, Cyber Monday, save your money, and to Giving Tuesday. Thank you.
I have a feeling if you don't, Marie will come find you somewhere. Very passionate. The next special proclamation, unfortunately, the person could not be here this morning to accept. She wanted me to report that she's violently ill, and she really does care about this, but she's not feeling well enough to come in this morning. So, it's my honor to read the proclamation, Marilyn Smith Mooney, Service Above Self. Whereas, Mrs. Marilyn Smith Mooney will be honored by the Rotary Club of Ponte Gorda with its 25th Annual Service Above Self Award on November 16, 2017; and whereas, Ms. Smith Mooney's private sector career spans 30 years in a variety of fields, and her credentials include an FAA commercial pilot's license, as well as flight and ground instructor certifications, which enabled her to operate a flight training and aircraft rental business; and whereas, Mrs. Smith Mooney served with distinction as a member of the Ponte Gorda City Council from 1996 to 2008, and served with the cities, as the city's first female mayor in 2001 and 2002, she represented the city on numerous boards, and her efforts as a council member greatly contributed to the revitalization and economic development of the city, especially after Hurricane Charlie. And whereas, she served eight years as the Director of the Military Heritage Museum and is the current board president, she is recognized for her active support of many nonprofit organizations in our community. And whereas Marilyn is passionate about her community, placing a high value on mutual respect, ethics, integrity, social conscience, conscience, and responsible leadership, she regards volunteerism as both a responsibility and opportunity to give of oneself to improve the world and mankind. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, does hereby honor Marilyn Smith Mooney for her service above self, and in recognition of the Lifetime Service Award as presented by the Ponte Gorda Rotary Club, which will actually take place this thir- tonight, actually, tomorrow night, Thursday night, passed and duly adopted and regular session this 15th day of November, 2017, City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, Rachel Kiesling, mayor, and I will be presenting this to her at the dinner. So, sorry she couldn't be here. And next, we have a very special service award that Howard will present.
So, before we have the interim chief get up here and talk regarding a 20-year service award for Corporal Tom Queegan, and before he comes up and gets the plaque, there's a little-known fact about Tom that everyone should know. There are some, many of our, not many, some of our employees are fluent in other languages. Tom happens to be fluent in French. So, when he gets up here after the interim chief talks about his career and he addresses us, he needs to address us in French.
Good morning. Jason, just getting in with the police department. I wanted to just take a moment and talk about our friend, Tom Queegan, this morning. Tom's been with us for the last 20 years, and what some people don't know is Tom actually started before his law enforcement career, he's actually a veteran in the United States Navy, served from 1982 to 1986 as active duty, and then was in the reserves from 88 to 94. From 1995 to 1997, Tom started with the Department of Corrections, where he was a corrections officer before he started working here at the Ponte Gorda Police Department in 1997. Throughout his career, he continued his education, earning his bachelor's degree in criminal justice in 2015. He was assigned as a field training officer and a member of our first-in team in 2000, and he was one of our inaugural members of our honor guard team in 2001. He's been trained as a crisis intervention team member, also a CPR instructor in 2001. Same year, he began leadership roles through the department, became a detective in 2007, spent some time in investigations before going back out to road patrol. Currently, he serves as a corporal on one of our road patrol squads. He's received numerous awards throughout his career, including lifesaving, exceptional team performance, and meritorious service. Tom has been married to his wife, Tina, for the last two years, and Tina has joined us here today to recognize Tom. Between them, they have four children and three grandchildren, with one more on the way, and Tom is not the only law enforcement member in his family, as Tina's son is a deputy with the Sarasota County Sheriff's Office, where he serves as a marine officer. Tom and Tina enjoy traveling the world together and spending time with Tom's mother and their grandkids. And I'm not sure I'm supposed to say this one, Tom, but I'm gonna say it anyway, 'cause it's written for me. Tom is a Facebook karaoke star. He's got several videos posted. He enjoys older songs and artists, and he's also interested in history, and is an expert in trivia. I've had the pleasure of working with Tom. We started in the same year, and we've seen a lot happen throughout our careers together, and I applaud you for all your accomplishments. So, congratulations.
Well, thank you very much, chief. I appreciate it. A few short words here. Back in 1997, this was definitely a much different city and a much different department 20 years ago. We've grown and evolved, and in a good way. And a lot has changed. We've gone through a lot of peaks and valleys, and, you know, we, well, you know, one thing I want to remark about is just the people in the department are just outstanding. I've worked with some outstanding officers and seen a lot of people come through, and it's been a real pleasure. I want to thank my wife for being here, and my daughter next door, and my squad back there, spread out back there. Thanks for putting up with me, and I want to thank my wife for putting up for all those nights by herself when I'm on midnight shift, so. But it's been a pleasure, and we look forward to, you know, getting a new chief, whoever he or she may be. We're looking forward to, you know, a new chapter, so thank you again for this honor, and it's been a pleasure.
Now that Marie knows your many talents, I'm sure she's gonna be calling you to do some kind of crazy stunt in the community, 'cause that's what she's, she's good at. I saw her eyes light up. Okay, um, let's just take a minute. If your name is in the running for a border committee and you would like to introduce yourself, now would be the time. Anybody? Yes, come to this podium right here. Let's, let's wait till they, till they get back on the streets. This was the safest place in Ponte Gorda there for 20 minutes.
Ready?
Yes.
I'm Haskell Rett. I'm interested in appointment to and your consideration for the Charlotte County Marine Advisory Committee. I first heard of this vacancy through the newspaper and followed through by an application to Town Hall and was guided here by Ms. Smith, and again, appreciate your consideration. I, I wanted, if I, if I should tell you about myself in a short period of time, and Ms. Smith said I could have two minutes, so I'm gonna put it all together pretty fast, but I, I have a large amount of experience in coastal-related matters. I don't know whether you've seen my resume or seen my application yet or not, but starting back as long as 35 years ago, I was with the Coastal Resources Commission in North Carolina, and we were staff, we were staff whereby we considered wide issues related to all coastal issues in, in North Carolina. I've attended the Charlotte County Marine Advisory Committee meeting last week, and I can see that there are points where I could add, I'm quite sure many of us could add a lot to, to the proceedings of these types of events, but I'm very familiar from that experience and from other experiences with the types of issues that will come up, and I would, I would look forward to the opportunity to have, have your consideration and your favorable consideration. My, my experience is beyond the work I did with the Division of Coastal Management as staff for the Coastal Resources Commission. I was a federal employee. In fact, the first time I came down to southwest Florida was 25 years ago. I was an analyst with OCRM, which is Office of Coastal Resource Management, which is a NOAA agency. We went to Tallahassee, and we talked to the department chair of the Environmental Department in North Carolina about issues related to the coastal program, and we came down here, we were looking at the operations and management of Rookery Bay, which is a estuarine sanctuary down just south of Naples. You're probably all familiar with that place. We got to look around and talk about the, the management and the operations there. Everything was going fine eventually. Did get to meet some interesting people on that trip, one of them being a guy by the name of Bolton Drackett, who was at that time considering giving Kiwaiden Island to the state to be used as a park. He was an engineer out of Chicago and a fine, fine gentleman, and treated us to a luncheon that day that was quite unforgettable. It was a five-star chef in his private quarters on the north end of Kiwaiden Island. I've not been back there since, but that was, that was quite an experience. Additionally, my experience related, related to coastal issues would go to my time as a lobbyist and a government relations manager for the North Carolina State Ports Authority. I was registered lobbyist in North Carolina and worked with the North Carolina General Assembly, as well as oversaw the work that was being done by consulting firm the Ports Authority had hired in Washington, DC. And we were looking for $400 million over a period of four years. $25 million of that was to come from the state, and 75 of that was to come from the federal government. We, we got it. We were deepening the harbor from 38 to 42 feet, and it was a, it was, it was very interesting work, met some incredibly interesting people, and once again, became more and more familiar with issues related to the coast and to the marine environment.
We have your resume. Yes, it's included in the agenda package, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, and appreciate your consideration. And if I can answer any questions, I think you have my contact information as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, come on up.
Yeah, my name is Timothy Sullivan. I'm also interested in being appointed to the Charlotte County, excuse me, Marine Advisory Committee. My background, I just moved to Florida in the last five months from Connecticut, and my background is I was an environmental engineer for 42 years, have a undergraduate degree in civil engineering and a master's in environmental engineering. And I've, up in Connecticut where I came from, I was a member of the volunteer fire department for 35 years, and also a member of the Board of Finance of the town that we live in. And again, you have my resume, and if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Hi.
My name's Fred Hannan. I'm a resident of Ponte Gorda Isles, and I'm interested also in the Marine Advisory Committee, and my background is marine construction. If there's anything else you all need, come around. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming to introduce yourself. We had quite the response to this vacancy, so thank you for coming, and if you're not selected, please stay interested in one of our other board positions, because we have a lot of qualified people and very strong resumes, and we appreciate your, your volunteerism, so thank you for that. And that's gonna take place at the very end of our meeting, so sorry about that. Now, we're gonna move into the public hearing agenda, and first, we have CP 02-17.
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance, which are read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of Ponte Gorda, Florida, amending the City of Ponte Gorda Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for properties generally described as Walmart 5001 Taylor Road and Murphy Oil 26359 Jones Loop Road, Ponte Gorda, Florida. 5001 Taylor Road and Murphy Oil 26359 Jones Loop Road, Punta Gorda, Florida, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here, too, containing 25.93 plus or minus and 0.77 plus or minus acres respectively, from commercial general county to highway commercial corridor city, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Thank you. We have a second reading. Any changes, any motions?
We did, we did a motion.
We need to do, we have to do public hearing.
No, this is second reading, so.
But it's under public hearings.
Comprehensive plan, Joan, does it need a second reading for a comprehensive plan
Mikhail Finkel, paralegal for the record. Yes, the comprehensive plan does require a second public hearing. It was advertised.
Okay, so this is the, it's, it's been through the DEO process, now it's back again, and now this is the second reading, so it is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on this comprehensive plan amendment, CP 02-17, now would be the time. If anybody would like to speak on CP 02-17, now would be the time. Anybody like to speak? Please take this podium over here. You have three minutes.
Move to close public hearing. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval of CP-02-17. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CP 02-17. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Welcome, Murphy Oil.
And Walmart.
And Walmart into the city.
Officially, although they've been in, you're welcome. Although they've been in the city for a while, as we've noticed, but, yeah. Now that it's official.
Yes, it is official. We have no quasi-judicial public hearings, but we do have two second readings of zoning and a impact fee schedule, so if you'd like to speak on either one of those, we'll take citizens' comments on GA 08-17 or Z 0217. If anybody would like to speak on those, we have citizens' comments. Okay, seeing none, we will move into GA 08-17.
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 11, Punta Gorda Development Impact Fees, Section 11-5, Definitions of the Punta Gorda Code, redefining non-residential development and residential development, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Do we need to do anything with that?
No, this is, there is no public hearing with respect to this one.
Okay.
Move approval of GA-08-17. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve GA 08-17. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have Z 02-17.
Yes, this is an ordinance of the, a second reading, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, rezoning properties generally described as Walmart 5001 Taylor Road and Murphy Oil 26359 Jones Loop Road, Punta Gorda, Charlotte County, Florida, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here, too, from commercial general county to highway commercial city, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Any comments or motions?
Motion to approve Z-02-17. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve Z 02-17. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we have the consent agenda, which are the approval of the minutes, a couple of invoices, the finance department with the automated metering, approval of that agreement, and the Founder's Day Week banner. Does anybody have items they want to pull?
Yes.
Yes?
I do, yes.
Okay, which one?
I'd like to pull D1.
D1, so that is the agreement for the automated meter reading?
Yes, I just have a quick question about.
Okay.
The question that I was asked is, can, can it be, can someone please clarify for me which functions these two vendors will each serve in the contract?
Good morning, Marion Pace Procurement Manager, for the record. Fortaline will be the overall contractor. They will oversee the installation and provide ongoing services. We will purchase the spare equipment through them, and also any type of meters that we keep in inventory. Zenner's part is a partner in the agreement, to where Zenner is the manufacturer of the Stealth Reader. It's the software, the citizens' portal, and also the, all of the infrastructure for their, the collection points.
So they run the software part of it?
Yes, they are basically on the software part.
Okay, thank you, that's all I need.
You're welcome.
So we're not, we're not pulling it?
Sorry?
You don't want to pull it, you just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, as long as the question's answered, I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Well, first, we need to take citizens' comments really quick. If anybody would like to speak on the consent agenda, now would be the time. Any one of those items on the consent agenda? Okay, now we'll take your motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
One quick thing, sorry. Lisa Hannan, zoning official, for the record. On the Founder's Day banner, we did receive an email from Ms. Gaylord, I think it was a day or two ago, saying that the size had changed from seven by three, seven foot by three, to nine foot by three. We just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, yeah, we, we got that email. I got it, so I think we were okay with it.
Yeah, I didn't get that.
I didn't get the email either.
You didn't get it?
But I'm fine with the size.
Are you fine with the size?
Yeah, I would, again, I approve, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, do we need to amend that?
With the amendment that the banner is nine by three?
Okay.
Nine by three, yeah.
Okay, so we have the motion and a second with the amendment of the size of the banner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we have citizens' comments on everything else that's on the agenda, so it would be the information technology appropriation, the approval of the Harbor Walk mural on the US 41 Southbound Bridge Underpass, the additional harbor access permitting update assessment methodology and economic study, the semi-automated sanitation cart selection, the Justice Center security issues, the Grand Harbor Burt Harris claim, the city council boards and committees, if you want to speak on that. Any one of those items, we'll take you at the podium over here. You have three minutes. Any one of those items that you would like to speak on, now would be the time.
In the, in the nature of complete transparency, there is a, a slight incorrection, mis, misidentification of the action or non-action that the county, city council will be requested to take regarding the Grand Harbor Burt Harris claim. It's on the agenda and the backup, it's, it's under recommended action. It says for discussion purposes only, no action taken or required. The council will need to direct the city attorney and the city manager to submit a settlement offer as, as recommended in that motion, and so if anyone was going to address that issue, they should be aware of the fact that I will be asking you to take action.
Okay. So just the wording on the cover page is a little, needs clarification.
Yeah, so if anybody didn't think that there was going to be any action taken, there will indeed be.
Okay. All right. Any one of those items, please make your way to the podium. You have three minutes.
I'm not sure if it's really one of those items, so I don't know if I should talk to her or wait. Don't make.
You can go ahead.
Thank you. We'll take a minute.
Okay.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Fig Newton, self-described social mayor of Punta Gorda. And I'm here today to talk about, first, Merry Christmas, everybody. We have two big events coming up in the next couple of weeks, and I wanted to bring it to your attention. Please spread the word. Most of you have heard about it. This Saturday night, we have the lighting of the village, and it's always a special occasion. This year, it's a little bit different. We've got a different theme. So if you've seen the other ones, please be there this week, because it's gonna be great. And that's from 5:00 to 9:00 on Saturday. Then Friday, December 1st, is the lighting, it'll light up the night. It's the lighting of our city Christmas tree. I'm super proud of that, and I hope everybody comes out for that. It's, starts at 5:30 with entertainment, and this year, it's even bigger and better. And please dress warmly, because there's supposed to be a blizzard coming in, so. That's pretty much it, and thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Make sure when you come up, you state your name first, for the record. We'd appreciate that.
Wendy Young. I'm a resident of Punta Gorda and Punta Gorda Isles and the Bird Section. I would like to state that.
And what is your name?
Wendy, W-E-N-D-Y, Young, Y-O-U-N-G.
Thank you.
Sorry. I would just like to state that I'm very concerned that those of us who live in the bird cut region have the possibility of the impact of two special assessments that might be coming upon us. If, if the council has already decided that we are to exclusively bear the burden of the bird cut itself, then there's also the possibility coming, if FEMA doesn't approve, of a special assessment in order to repair all of the canal seawalls that are damaged. And that's of great concern, and I'd like the council to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please make your way to the podium if you would like to speak on the regular agenda items.
Morning. Name is Frank Malone. I live in the Bird Section. I'd like to thank the council for all their work. I just have to express my thoughts that I think the council does a wonderful job. I think they've gone astray. I think we've gone astray. All I've heard as far as the assessment and the cut through was them, me, I. We have a wonderful town here. We have all these amenities that is for every one of us. Not all those use, but we all pay for. And I think you're going on a very, very slippery slope when you're taking one item, raking it away, and saying, "You will pay for it." What we have here is a wonderful thing, and it should be us, not them, me, or I. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on regular agenda items? Now would be the time. These are not public hearings, so this would be the time to speak if you want to speak on those items.
Karen Turnbull, resident of Punta Gorda, Punta Gorda Isles and the Bird Section. I would like to agree with the two previous statements. I also think it's a very slippery slope. Where the line is drawn, apparently people on one side of the street will be assessed for the new cut through, where the people across the street won't. And I don't know how people can determine that one benefits more than the other when they're, they're just right there. So, and I do agree that it will benefit everyone, at least everyone in Punta Gorda Isles, it will, who have boats. Those of us in the Bird Section who don't have boats will receive no benefit, and I know people have talked about an increase in home value, but again, with the increase in home value in one section, the home value in the other sections are also gonna go up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, my name is Richard Braun. I live in Charlotte Park 3. I am adamantly and have always adamantly been opposed to the cut, but I'm not going to go down that road. One of the questions I'd like to ask is Irma took out 15 miles of seawalls in the, in PGI. You're going to do a cut that's almost 1,500 feet long, 60 feet wide, and six foot deep. The damage that was done by Irma was from the existing canal entrances, and now you're going to open a sluice, basically, that will allow a huge amount of water to leave the canals very quickly. And I think that you really should take that into consideration. The other thing that I would like to mention is, and I've heard the comment twice about the cost factor, it's a state law that those who benefit from a special project are the ones that are required by law to pay for that. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else? Regular agenda items? Now would be the time. We're about ready to move on. We're moving on. Okay, first, we have one budget item, information technology appropriation.
Yes, this is a reappropriation. This is not all of the reappropriations. This is just, we want to do information technology first, so that they can keep moving on all of their projects that are listed on the agenda.
Questions about the appropriation?
No, I guess I would move approval. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the appropriation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And now we're moving into unfinished business, and first, we have approval of the Harbor Walk mural on US 41 Southbound Bridge Underpass. Is Kelly here?
No.
Well, I just wanted to tell you that yesterday, this morning was the maiden flight.
There she is, there she is.
Oh, there she is.
She was in the seats.
Okay, come in. This morning was the maiden flight from Punta Gorda to St. Cloud, Minnesota, and the mayor of St. Cloud had to fly Delta into Fort Myers to get here to take the flight back this morning, so that was, that was kind of funny. But he, I guess he stopped in your office, because he got my phone number somehow, and Howard didn't meet up with him, but he gave me a call, and he's a history major, and he's a history buff, and he so complimented all of the murals around the town, and he thought they were amazing and wonderful, and he loved the History Park as well, and I did try to send him to the, to the fire station. I don't know if he made it, but I told him to try to stop by there and see our latest and greatest.
Oh, good.
So that was, he was very complimentary, so I wanted to pass that along to you.
Oh, thank you. So, good morning, Kelly Gaylord from the Punta Gorda Historic Mural Society. So this new mural, oh, it's coming up. Okay.
I'm not able to get to the internet. I thought I was.
Okay. So the new mural will be located along the Harbor Walk, under the US 41 Southbound Bridge. Our artist is Skip Dearda from Sarasota, the same artist who painted the Firehouse mural, and he will also be beginning our Ladies mural in a week and a half, so look forward to that.
Hold on.
Oh, okay, well, you want this one?
Oh, yeah, okay. Sorry.
What is this?
What's going on here?
We just gave IT money, and now look, everything went, everything went haywire.
I think they're all spending the money.
Yeah, they're all spending the money.
They had this, they had this plan that if we didn't approve it, they're gonna say, "See what you did?"
I was gonna bring my big poster, but it's always up there, so, of course. Anyway, so the mural will be 76 feet in length, and just over 100, 1,100 square feet, quite a large mural. It's actually a little larger than the Firehouse mural, the combination of both panels, believe it or not. It's a big one. So it'll take about two to three months to complete, once the funds have been raised. That's always the key, the key item there. The scene depicted, it's not up there yet, sorry. The scene depicted in the proposed mural will capture the marine life. Okay, sorry about that.
Up to have the rest.
I don't know what this is.
It'll capture the marine life of our amazing Charlotte Harbor, past and present. Education is always a key objective of the Mural Society, and we feel this mural will not always, not only provide a lesson in history of what used to be in the harbor, but also inspire conservation of a fragile marine ecosystem. Okay, I can kind of see that. Good. So we're looking for your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Kelly.
I think it's awesome.
I think it's really awesome.
It may be my favorite yet.
Makes you think you're in Modaquarium.
Yeah. I mean, you guys are getting really creative on these spaces that you're deciding to paint, so I really like that.
We're trying, trying to up our game, yeah, absolutely.
You have upped the game, for sure.
Thank you.
It's awesome, and I would encourage everyone, I want to thank you for being the ride director for the Founder's Day City Manager's Bicycle Tour, and encourage everyone to sign up. It's only 20 bucks, so sign up now, and you'll be on a tour with Howard, and it'll be a stroll around town to some historic sites.
Absolutely. Lots of fun.
And it, you don't have to, it's a no spandex.
Yeah.
So you don't have to be, you know, you're not, but you will have to wear a helmet, but it's.
Probably won't break a sweat.
No, no.
But that's okay. But you can still write it down as your aerobic exercise for the day. I am, so.
There we go.
But, yeah, and it'll be a fundraiser for this mural.
So you can find all the information on the.
On the mural website.
Society website, so. I had to put a plug in, so.
Yes, good plug. So now we need approval.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the new mural. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope we're gonna see. I think we're going to see lots of signups today.
Okay.
Okay, we're up and running?
So, the, as they're getting set up on the next item?
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to start the next item off with Hans Wilson, who is our consulting engineer, and he can provide us a update on the permitting status before we get into the economic report and the legal review.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Hans Wilson and I have been tasked with seeking state and federal permits for the secondary channel alignment project, also known as Bird Cut. And to date, we have received our state authorization, the DEP has issued their permit, so we're through and we're now consistent or considered consistent with the Clean Water Act. And we are now on our third project manager assignment with the Army Corps of Engineers. And we have received finally some responses from National Marine Fisheries Service after we did a site visit with them and the Corps back in June. And the, there's two parts to National Marine Fisheries Service, there's the Essential Fish Habitat folks, which are concerned about mangrove impact, and there is the Protected Resource Division, which is small to sawfish. And the Essential Fish Habitat folks are concerned about the project and feel that it should be aligned more to the east impacting the adjacent property owners, but I have prepared a response indicating that the city, I think, in my opinion, has done a pretty good job of evaluating the alternatives and balancing the needs of resource protection, boater navigation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, we are in consultation under Section 7 of the Naged Species Act with National Marine Fisheries Service as a commenting agency to the Army Corps of Engineers, which is the permitting agency. So, timeframe wise, best case scenario, I would say probably within the next six months, we should have a final from the Army Corps of Engineers, assuming that they don't reassign the project to another project manager. And that's where we are so far today. Questions?
So, are they the ones that are going to give us some mitigation direction? Is that what they would do?
We have, we have our mitigation worked out with the DEP permit and we have our public interest worked out with the DEP permit. So, there are special conditions of the permit that at the point that we execute, then we proceed to buy Little Pine Island mitigation credits for mangrove impacts. And our public interest, I believe, is a donation to the Aquatic Preserve Society. I think our fee is like $3,500. It was pretty insignificant compared to a lot of projects I've done in aquatic preserves.
So, that's already been ironed out?
Yes, we're, we're square with that, correct.
Questions for Hans before he moves into?
So, assuming we get the Army Corps approval and permit, then what other agencies do we still have to have permits from?
Only local, city of Punta Gorda. I would assume that will be approved in some fashion.
You never know. Any other questions? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'd like to now introduce our economist, Phil Gonat, and he will have a presentation for us on the economic analysis.
Good morning, my name is Phil Gonat with PMG Associates. Our direction, authorization was to look at two particular issues. One was, was there an economic benefit to the people that would be in the Punta Gorda Isles area that was designated as the benefit area? And the second one was looking at what would be the total amount of assessment based on our preliminary numbers in terms of the project construction. So, we did look at the benefit area and then measured that increase. We then performed an allocation based on current code in terms of the number of docking facilities that can be supplied in the area and then prepared a preliminary assessment This was the original benefit area that was provided to us in terms of the area based on engineering issues and other access issues to the harbor.